All right, we'll call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Uh, everybody will be staying with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you hear them? Uh, quick roll call, uh, Mayor Moser, Trustee LaFever, Trustee Crawford, and Trustee Smith are all present. Uh, Trustee Wolf is absent. Clerk LaQuay, DBW Superintendent Wolf, and Treasurer Doucette are all present, correct?
Yep.
Yep, yep. Uh, I know Attorney Jay is on his way. He'll just be a little waiting for it. Uh, get right into it. We have the DEC and the alien elements from NDA, engineers are here to update us on the groundwater well. So, you guys are up.
I have the question to stand. I'm Ben Ron with the DEC. This is Brian Serby. He's the State's consultant through Ecology and Environment. Uh, Brian's gonna run through a fairly brief presentation, uh, mostly about the investigative work that we've done. Briefly touching on the treatment system. Uh, following that, I think he'll just probably answer the questions in the head.
All right. So, got this together, essentially what I was gonna run through, I think I've got eighteen slides. So, just was gonna do touch base a little bit on the area, geology, and a little bit of the background of the contamination. Um, the activities we went through for the site characterization, the analytical results. Then we'll talk touch base about the temporary treatment system, kind of the current status of the plume, where we are. And then that's kind of leading into the future plans, questions, kind of where everything's situated. But kind of what, I guess really it is the future, where we're going forward. So, um, I had a feeling you guys may want the presentation. That's why I made it a little bit wordy, so at least it walked through kind of everything that I'm gonna go through. So, um, the village is located in the north to south trending valley. We have a hundred to three hundred feet of glacial and glacial crusturing deposits. Basically, it's all, it's how much the overburden, how much dirt is sitting on top of the bedrock, simplified. Uh, there's two overburden aquifers that are identified beneath the, not only the seventy-one sixty-seven Route 353 site, but it's over essentially the valley and the area we've been investigating. So, there's an upper aquifer that extends to about twenty, twenty-five feet, the top surface. It's followed by about sixty to ninety feet. It's called an aquatard. Essentially, it's mostly silt and clay. It's not allowing communication between the upper aquifer and the lower aquifer. And then the lower aquifer, um, which is where the village backup water supply well is located and where most of the people where they would be getting their water from. That lower aquifer is generally located from eighty to about a hundred and forty feet below the ground surface. And it can be up to forty to fifty feet thick on the hillside. But when we're getting towards the center of the valley and where the backup water supply well is, it's about twenty feet thick. So, just kind of giving you the idea that there is two, but essentially all the investigation and everything we've been focused on is that lower aquifer where the contamination appears to be present. So, essentially, there's the, uh, Route seventy-one sixty-seven property that was initially targeted as they, just based on historic use of the property, appeared to be that they were expecting that to be the source of the contamination. Um, you have in the red defense area, that's the villages, and you have the backup water supply well located there. So, just to give you a relationship of kind of where everything started. So, the backup water supply well was drilled to approximately a hundred and forty feet back in ninety-two. It's been installed with a hundred and eighty gallon pump that's typically run, from my understanding, it was run at about two hundred gallons per minute when it was used during the summer months. Methylene chloride was first detected in the well at about two micrograms per liter uh, during the public drinking water supply sampling in August of two thousand eight. From that point on, it was monitored, and I know DOH was aware of this. And in late two thousand twelve, the DEC was informed that the methylene chloride levels had exceeded the state drinking water standards of five micrograms per liter. And it was taken out of service in October twelfth, two thousand twelve. So, uh, in March of two thousand thirteen, methylene, the methylene chloride levels in the backup water supply well were sampled. It was as high as fifteen. And, um, at that point, the source of the plume was unknown, but as I said prior, the, the property was identified as a potential source. Okay, so in January of two thousand thirteen, Groundwater Environmental Services, or GES as they're kind of known, uh, was hired by the DEC. And, uh, they stud, they focused their investigation on the seventy-one sixty-seven property itself. And during that time, they dug seven test pits. They installed twenty-two boreings and installed fifteen monitoring wells out of those twenty-two boreings. And of those locations, of those wells, they were also looking at shallow, kind of intermediate, if they could find something. But typically, it was shallow and deep wells is, but they also did, they did a cluster of these intermediate wells. So, out of the fifteen, uh, well locations, only one of the wells, um, was detected with methylene chloride. It's this well MW eight D. It is on the northeast corner of the property. It's gonna be shown in a figure in a minute. So, after that kind of happened, my company, Ecology and Environment, were one of the standby contract, uh, consultants for the state. We were brought on board. And so, we were asked to find where's the contamination coming from, uh, where's the source of it coming from. But also very important at the same time was, which will be later in the presentation, to install a temporary treatment system, uh, that would make this backup water supply well usable during the summer months when it was in demand.
Brian, I could interject at this point. January two thirteen, two thousand thirteen, uh, is when Senator Young, or Con, excuse me. Yeah, Senator Young, Captain Young, uh, wrote a letter to the governor on behalf of the village, uh, requesting that the DEC, uh, address this issue. More specifically, asking us to provide treatment to the wellhead. That's what really prompted the contract with GES to do the investigative work. They did the invest, the initial investigation as Brian described. But they are more so a response contractor. They can get in the field quickly, give us good information upfront. We then brought on Ecology and Environment because they are more substantial firm, able to look at, um, bigger picture type of stuff. Look at the overall effects or potential that the methylene chloride has to move in groundwater. And they are also more capable in, uh, designing and implementing the treatment strategy.
So, when we were brought on board in early two thousand thirteen, uh, we ended up drilling and installing a total of twelve monitoring wells over three phases I kind of started with. So, I was brought in as a project manager, I'm a geologist, and that's where I was brought in for the investigation. And, uh, we initially started with six wells that were, uh, around kind of the, the backup water supply well to kind of find a direction to begin with. And then once we had the direction, which was from the south, that's where I installed a couple more wells to trace it. Evidence pointed back to the seventy-one sixty-seven property. So, I installed four wells in the November of two thousand thirteen across the eastern part of the property. Found some additional contamination on the property. So, it did confirm that that was the source of the contamination. And then we did two additional wells in June of two thousand fourteen. That was an attempt to find the source of material on the property. We kind of know what area of the property we were looking at. So, we were trying to see, is there significantly higher levels of contamination that might have suggested a source? Um, which we did not find. So, as you can kind of see here, there's quite a mass. So, you'll see a couple different sets of wells. The wells in the white blue are some of the areas that GES initially was looking at. They were focused up towards the plant and some of the historical operations. I believe this is kind of the leach field area for them that they had focused to. And then this is that well MW eight D. This was the one well of what they had put on that had detected contamination, but it was very low level. It was lower than what we were detecting in this area of the backup water supply well and test well one. So, when we were brought on board, what I did was, we initially started with these four wells to kind of find direction. We're limited with topography a little bit and kind of the farmland and what's going on in the area. That's why you kind of see stuff spread out a little bit. But the well that we detected the contamination was twelve. And that's is where we came with fifteen and then sixteen. We found contamination in fifteen. We have never detected anything down as far south as sixteen. So, that was what prompted us to move on to the property. And this is where we focused along the northeastern section of the property. This is the well that we found, the highest levels of contamination that we found during the investigation came from the well seventeen D one. And this is where we tried to move what would be considered up gradient or upstream of where that, that well was. Everything should be flowing, um, from the east down, or west down slope eastward. So, that's why we tried to step up and we didn't find anything. This initially was where I started. Found nothing, moved closer. We found trace the first time we were in the well as we were drilling it. I have never detected anything there since. So, this is what's leading me to believe that there is no true source anymore that's present on the site. And based on the idea that this was historical use of the property before the current owners that are there, anything that's been done is, the majority of it's probably moved on. So, it's probably has moved down gradient. And so, the regional groundwater flow for that deep is essentially moving from the south to the north along the valley. But since it's so deep, it's not what you would, may not be what you think, which is exactly center of the valley or center of the hill, area between the two hills. There is some fluctuation because it's deep. Depends what the old river valleys, we're talking twenty thousand years ago when the glacier was deposited. That's what's directing how the water's traveling. But I'm guessing it's going in some sort of a southwest northeast direction. So, that's kind of what a lot of this next slide just went through. So, we initially found the highest levels in MW fifteen going south, the second phase. We stepped onto the property and found some additional higher level contamination. Third phase, we never found the, uh, the contamination itself, uh, source area on the property. And we talked about the groundwater flow direction. So, based on the wells that we have here, this is kind of what I'm showing you is groundwater elevation is moving for, it's moving from the property in essentially a west to east pattern off the hillside. And then as it's reaching towards the center of the valley, there's this bending that's starting to happen. It's starting to turn and wants to head northward essentially. A little bit limited in the data that's sitting out in the valley. So, I don't know exactly, this is kind of where you see some bends, but I don't take it very far because I don't have enough data to fully define how it's moving through the valley. But it's giving us the idea, as I said, once again, the building's kind of heading off and then moving towards the northeast direction.
So, does that even at the homes along the side of three fifty-three then? Is that their grounds that are contaminated now, is that what you're?
The contamination is down somewhere between in the aquifer here, a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty feet. So, the only way that a homeowner should have a concern or would have a problem is if they actually would dig a well or put something down to that depth. And that's the only way that they would encounter that contamination. So, even along here, where you've got this kind of, um, I'm not sure what string this is that's coming along the property. I know that it's kind of along, runs along the north side of the, uh, the village backup well. That's only sitting about thirty feet below what you would consider ground surface, kind of at the top here where the well is. This is still, even the water that's sitting in this stream is still ninety feet above where the contamination is located. So, there's no chance for that contamination to even come up into the stream. You've got that eighty feet worth of, uh, silt and clays that'll prevent it. The contamination itself too, the nature of it, it's heavier than water and wants to sink. It doesn't want to float.
Right. Is, uh, is this a compound that's naturally found in anywhere in the environment? Or is it always from a source of pollution?
Typically not found in the environment. A lot of times what you see is the breakdown product of chlorinateds. So, it's very rare to kind of find it out by itself like we did here where that was the one problem with the well. If we would've found, um, try to chloroethylene, which is a common one, you know, you know, TCE, PCE, then I would've said, okay, maybe there's another source there that's, uh, you know, of that chlorinateds and that's just a breakdown product. But since it's kind of there by itself, it's, it's, no, it's not abnormal.
Do they use it up at the seventy-one sixty-seven?
Historically, they did. They had a permit on their property to have a tank that could hold up to five thousand gallons at an annual. So, this is back in the seventies, eighties is kind of when that permit was held. And that was why that was initially identified as the most likely source. That was where the, that's why the investigation could kind of start again.
We have manifests indicating that they shipped. Everything that came on the site went off to the site. Now, that, that's what we have documentation of. The other thing, um, sorry, just slipping on to the other thing we have documentation of is the, can I ask, how, how readily does it, um, does this compound tend to dissipate laterally as it's moving away from the source? Is it gonna spread wider or?
No, it's not gonna be something like an MTVE that's gonna wanna spread and go beyond the plume and do it. It's gonna essentially, it'll slowly dissipate, but not, not very much. That's actually one of the things that we found is, it looks like the plume that was coming off the property had to be very, very narrow. I would say it probably couldn't have been more than two hundred foot wide kind of coming off the property. Just between what, what I've seen of where I have no contamination and I have trace initially, the, the distance between here is about four hundred feet. So, I would say initially, the plume coming off of there was fairly narrow. And I wouldn't have expected it to have expanded too much wider. It's probably, it's traveling more with however groundwater is traveling.
Do you think the, the village using that well might've drawn it over that way?
That's exactly what I think it is. When the well was in operation at two hundred gallons a minute during those summer months, I have a feeling the plume, we're jumping ahead a little bit, but kind of the plume is it's coming off and would be going this direction when it would be, and this is just a guess at this point because I don't have the data to show it. But let's say this is where the, the plume wants to come off. That when the well is in operation, it's more than likely that it would've gotten drawn to this direction. And that's one of the things we've been seeing with the data is, um, concentrations have decreased significantly over the last three years. So, that's where I think it is, it's no longer being drawn towards the well. That's why the, 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 uh, the numbers and the concentrations in this area significantly less. And I've got a slide a little bit later on that shows the last three rounds of groundwater sampling and what the levels are at now. So, we have collected a total of eight rounds of groundwater samples from the site. The two low flow events are what we initially started with. It's, it's a more standard way of sampling groundwater. Um, the problem is you create waste with that. Since this compound is a volatile organic compound, there's a special kind of sampling device that's called a passive diffusion bag that'll work, that doesn't create really any waste with it. You can set these bags in a well. It allows the volatile organics to go back and forth. It equilibrates with the well. It takes about three weeks, four weeks for that to happen. We pull it back up, we sample it, and there's no waste created. So, when we initially started the sampling, that's why I started traditionally. The second event, I collected both low flow and a passive diffusion bag to show concentrations were essentially the same in a well, which is what the state requires to happen. Since the, the numbers have matched up, that's what we've gone and some of that point forward is, we just use passive diffusion bags to do the sampling. So, besides methylene chloride, we have code, we have identified fifteen other VOCs in a variety of rounds, um, from a variety of wells. Typically, these are trace concentrations. I've seen trace amounts of like benzene or toluene, which is gonna be something that's much more common with like gasoline or something along those levels. But generally, when I found them in the well, the next time we come back to sample the well, I haven't seen it. So, it's basically, if there's this very, very low level contamination of other contaminants down there, it's right at detection level. It's nothing to be concerned with, nothing else to trace or track or do anything with. The only consistent contaminant that we found in some of the wells is benethylene chloride.
What's a VOC?
It's a volatile organic compound. So, um, to kind of give you, the best example I can give you is gasoline. And a volatile organic compound is a compound that wants to go to the vapor state. That's why when you have gasoline, you smell it when you're pumping it. And that's what you're burning is the fumes, is you're burning the volatile component of those vapors. They have components that are called semi-volatiles. Those are ones that will go, but they do it at a much slower rate. There's other types of contamination, there's PCVs, there's pesticides, there's metals, but, um.
A VOC is not a naturally occurring situation as a man-made?
There are some naturally occurring volatile organic compounds, but.
Of the fifteen that you had, were they natural or were they?
Essentially, I would say no. But as I said, there are very trace levels that they're very, just slightly above what's allowed to be detectable, not what's anywhere approaching a concern of what would be a drinking water standard or anything else that would be a problem. Just letting you know, and in the report, as we wrote up the report that came out at the end of two thousand fourteen, that kind of summarizes, we do outline the fifteen VOCs that were detected, when they were detected, from what well. But as you can go through, there is no trend, there is no, I consistently find a benzene or a different compound on a continual basis or a rising level or anything that was a, a concern or a problem. So, when, besides the backup water supply well for the village, uh, essentially, there have been six wells that have detected the methylene chloride.
Just before you go on, I'm just looking at it. You got number one, then you got number eight. And then we jump. Now, there's twelve, fifteen, seventeen, and eighteen. Are they all relatively close together?
Um, they follow the trend of where it is. So, that's the backup water supply well. That's test well one. This is, the, the village drilled three test wells before they drilled in ninety-two, the backup water supply well. So, we initially had gone through, we sampled these three wells. These had, these were non-detect. We have not continued to monitor them based on what the contamination is, but we continue to monitor test well one on a quarterly basis. Twelve is the one, fifteen, seventeen, eighteen D, and that was the eight D. So, as you see, it's the trend of these three wells, this well, that well, and here. So, it's kind of the, the motion of what we're seeing. If you want to, coming further south, this is clean, this is clean, these have always been clean, that direction. So, we're just kind of monitoring, um, where we saw the contamination. So, the highest levels of the methylene chloride was found while drilling. That's seventeen D one, which is the, which was the well that was on the seventy-one sixty-seven property. The highest levels of methylene chloride we detected in the village well was sixteen micrograms per liter. So, significantly less than what we found on these, care, of the seventy-one sixty-seven property. But methylene chloride has decreased in all site wells since we started the investigation and has not been, has not been detected in the village backup water supply well over the last two sampling events. Today, we just completed the third event. Right now, we're kind of in a monitoring period where we're sampling the wells twice a year. We're tending to do one in the spring and one in the fall. So, the June one we collected is actually the June first. It was the, uh, just, we didn't collect it in May, I couldn't make it up. Last week of May to collect it like I expected. And then this one is kind of in October now.
Now, you said that a lot of it, a lot of the methylene chloride was coming because when we had the well going at two hundred gallons per minute and that was just drawing it. Say we're to start the well again, would that not reactivate and we draw more of it and be contaminated once again?
Potentially, yes. It depends how much you run it. When it was getting run, from my understood, back in the, let's say, two thousand ten to two thousand twelve time period before, and Jason knows better than I do, when it was running. It was running over probably a three month period and it would start off from once a week to in the middle of summer at the driest portion, they were probably running it three, four days a week. And when they would run it, they'd run it for twenty-four hours to thirty hours straight, shut it down for a day or two, and then turn it back on for twenty-four or thirty hours straight again. So, it was a significant amount of runtime that was happening in a portion of the year. So, I would think that you would once again need to run it a significant amount of time to then redraw the plume back towards yourself. I think turning the well on and running it short-term may not do it, but once again, it may draw it, I don't know.
Is there going to be a point in time where the plume is gone?
Probably. I mean, it depends what's in the subsurface and how well it bound to some of the organic material that's there that it may take quite a long time before it's all gone. But I think the majority of the bulk of the plume itself is mostly moving on. I think we're at the tail end of the plume. I think if there was an issue and the source of the material was some time back in the eighties, we've had now thirty years of groundwater movement of it moving on. And I think we tend to be towards the tail end of it, just by some of the results that I've seen on the site as well as the drop over the last couple of years. So, yes, I, yes, I think there's gonna be, there's gonna come a point in time that I don't think it's gonna be a problem that turning the well on, running it as you need to, and it's not gonna exceed the five.
All right, are you saying now, are you saying a year, two years, five years, ten years?
I don't know.
The more we run it, is it more likely to draw it and make it move after?
The more you run it right now, the greater chance you're gonna have to pull what's left of the plume towards the well. Will it bring it back up to the levels of sixteen where it was? Maybe, maybe not. It may bring it up to the levels of eight at this point.
What I'm saying is, if we run it, say we say we run it today, ran it, you know, three, four days a week for however long, and draw that back in, will that make it pass?
Will it clear itself?
Right. Will it flush itself?
No, because what you're doing is, the plume itself naturally wants to move one direction. All you're doing is redirecting a portion of it.
So, we gotta wait for it to go?
Correct.
What was the permissible level?
Five. So, for the last two runs to be non-detect. That's where detection level is, I believe, point one for our results. So, it's significantly, we should be able to detect something. You know, it's a very low level.
How long did it take the well run when you, when you tested it?
The, we typically let it run for about five minutes to side discharge. Like today, we were running it at probably, I wanna say sixty gallons a minute for about five minutes. So, I'm trying to clear everything that would be in the pump and in the, the line that's coming up. And I'm just sampling hopefully what's nearby groundwater to give me a representative sample. I don't wanna overly run it at this point because I don't wanna start drawing anything. I'm trying to get something of the groundwater at the point that's similar to what would be, let's say, in test well one.
Jason, when you run the well, like, what's the electric bill on that one?
I can't remember. I know we put the variable speed drive in, but see, now it's different. We've got a much smaller pump in the well because we've only had the pump up and into the, into the, into the stripper. So, I think there's like a fifteen horse pump in there now compared to, John, what was in there? Was that a forty horse pump?
Forty horse.
I think it was forty horse. So, and it's not a variable speed now, so there's night and day difference. I think we were probably, once we had the variable speeds in there, like four to six hundred a month. Um, I don't know what it would be with a smaller, with a smaller well, or a smaller pump.
Well, I was just gonna say, with the pump that's in there, you, you can't run directly into your distribution system. The pump isn't large enough to push water all the way to the tank.
It's not large enough to even penetrate the amount of pressure we have holding against it.
Right. So, basically, if you, if you turn that pump on directly to your distribution system, it would just turn, it's not gonna do anything. So, if, if you're gonna use that well, you have to use the treatment plant they built. Have to use them. The treatment plant that they built.
That the DEC built.
The main, the main well pump was switched as part of the process of developing.
Right, right. I think to be able to push it through the system. I think they either put in ten or fifteen horse, I can't remember what it pulls, but in.
What were you really, what were you getting at with your question? Just expense?
Well, I, I just were, you know, you're saying that the plume's moving on. But if we run the pumps, it has a tendency to suck it back into the system, pollution. So, you know, are we going to, is it, do we wait for the plume to move on? Or do you, uh, bring, bring it back in and flush it into a creek or something like that? So that it, it moves faster? Okay. And if we do that, what's the cost to that? You know what I mean? The, I mean, I could see where you could pull. The, I mean, I could see where you could pull, put your forty horsepower on there, bring it up. You don't put it into the distribution system, you just run it back into a stream and, uh, and get rid of it. But with, there's an expense related to that.
Well, you still could leave the smaller pump in, that's basically essentially what it is. Like, the pump still moves the same amount of water as what we needed before. And when you go into the stripper, you're pumping against nothing, you're just dumping it down and filling the tank. Um, and then from there, they had a thirty horse pump, I believe it's thirty horse of the stripper. Cause it wasn't pulling the initial hundred feet up to push into our system. So, I mean, if we just wanna run it down the bank, that pump is, is not, is big enough to do it, you wouldn't have to switch.
But ultimately, if that would be your idea, I would not use the village well existing. You would wanna put a well that would be in line with the direction the groundwater flow wants to naturally go.
Can you go back to that map with the test well too?
Yep, well, here's where I was gonna jump ahead, which is the next one, which is roughly where everything's dashed. You're roughly seeing where the plume.
Is going.
Kind of was when we first initially sampled and what we're looking at of how it's coming down and what kinda got pulled up. Where I think naturally this wants to go somewhere down here and wants to go more in this direction. But.
So, if we were to use the black mar, would, would we gotta use the black mar well, we have to create a whole new well, is what you're, you're saying?
If you wanted to do that idea of drawing the plume and making it go past your area faster.
That would make sense.
That's what you would wanna do, is you'd wanna put a well, let's say, out this direction. That would then pull that water, the natural flow direction it wants to go, which is this direction, as opposed to trying to pull it to the side. That's how you would pull the plume past your well faster. But there would be, I would say, a very high expense that would be related to it. Because you'd be running a well consistently at two hundred gallons a minute. And it'd be a higher bill than what you were seeing on the occasional use of your town well. But, so from July of two thousand fourteen, here with the concentrations, this is kind of the higher point. When things have started to, uh, drop off. What you had is a hundred and ten, two point nine, non-detect in the black, oh, one point nine, this is the last time we detected anything in the well. And eleven was in the test well. So, this is kind of the highest levels of contamination of what we found and worst-case scenario of what the plume looked like. Since this time, levels have continued to drop off at the levels in MW fifteen or down in the fifty level. Um, twelve, the MW twelve has continued to drop, that it's near non-detect. Um, the village well has been non-detect. And test well one, I think, was one point nine the last time we sampled. I've got the numbers on the table up here.
So, seventeen D two is your highest one, or D one?
D one was, when we initially drilled, we saw one seventy there. And then since that time, it's significantly dropped off an hour and below single digits. Um, I think it's actually gone up slightly since this round where it's gone back to the ten level. But it's been nowhere near the one seventy, um.
But fifteen isn't.
Well, this is where the idea now, where this was the highest well, this is now the highest well at fifty. Still half of what it was, but it's not the highest level. This is why I think the plume is moving on. And I think we're catching the tail end of the plume for that idea of this. And if this continues to stay and this continues to drop, I think that's eventually, that's gonna be one of your ideas of, fine, the plume may have moved on when this is down in the single digits past the point of where this would pull it up.
I think it's below a five.
So, that's kind of the plume, this is kind of the investigation portion of what we did, where we think the plume is. How we think it kinda went up to the village well and kind of a little bit of an idea of what's going on now. That levels across the site have dropped, as I said, I still got the slide, I don't think with the table here, right? That's a little bit at the end, saying these are the levels, this is how quickly it's dropped. Um, so what we're gonna go on to is kind of the temporary treatment system that was built. So, the, the idea behind this was, um, set up a temporary treatment system, um, to treat methylene chloride. And what, what was asked of us was to design a system that could treat levels up to fifty micrograms per liter. At the time when we first got brought on, levels in the village well had continued to increase. And had gone from the level of five to sixteen to seventeen, and the concern was it was gonna continue to climb. So, what we wanted to do was design a system that could treat fifty to less than one, with the limit being five for drinking water standards. And we wanted to do it at a flow rate of two hundred and fifty gallons. So, I mean, we got asked to be brought on this project, I believe it was April was when we were first contacted in the May. We were asked to have something in place by July fifteen, which is almost a near impossibility. But that was the goal of what we were shooting for. So, what we came up with the design was a shallow tray airstripper housed in a cargo container. We didn't have time to build a facility or a structure, so we found a company that can build a treatment system inside a cargo container. And then what we had, the request from the, uh, village at the time was to be able to run it through the telemetry system. The village well was getting turned on from telemetry, and so what they wanted was, when it had to get turned on, we would turn the treatment system on the same way. So, everything would operate as one.
What is telemetry?
It's communications, it's radio communication.
Oh, oh. So, basically, they'd call it up, tell it to turn on, and it would turn on.
Well, it'd turn on by level according to the reservoir.
Okay. So, because it wasn't ready, we designed the system and as they were in production, we realized it wasn't gonna be ready until August. And we weren't gonna make it to our deadline. We worked with the village and the D E C is a backup water supply measure. And, uh, we were able to fix five springs in the July of two thousand thirteen that were added to the village's water supply. And that's then producing, I think it was somewhere between sixty to a hundred gallons a minute. Extra water supply is what it was brought in, if I remember right.
Right.
So, um, as that tide, with the addition of the springs, the black mar water, the, the backup water supply well hasn't been needed. It hasn't been used in three years now. Besides it being shut down, we haven't had to run it through the treatment system for a water supply. So, the village has been able to meet its needs with its other existing sources.
Right.
So, um, the initial commissioning run was run on September eleventh for the treatment system. And the completed works approval was done on September seventeenth. However, at that point, there were some flow rate surges that were happening when water was delivered into the delivery system. Wasn't running at a consistent pace to the treatment system. So, it was kind of pulsing the village water supply well. So, we made some wiring, we did some system control logic programming, which is basically, they did some computer reprogramming of how the system would run. And, um, we tried to throttle back to fix the problem, but we never really got a good chance to test it, so the system was winterized. If it's not, you don't wanna run the water through the system, we can help it during winter. Um, so, we restarted it back up in the spring, we did some additional troubleshooting. And on September tenth, two thousand fourteen, we ran, I believe it was twenty-two to twenty-four hour tests. That ran at a consistent pace and everything seemed to be running good with the treatment system. Uh, but at that test, and what we did, we found out the village backup generator wasn't working properly. So, we had to do one or two sets of repairs because that was also the backup, um, energy supply for the treatment system. So, if something goes out, there's a power outage, you need water, you also need a backup energy source. So, had one, fixed one thing, ran into another problem. As we were fixing the problem, we found out in July that the village, uh, telemetry system was damaged by a lightning strike. And the request was, now that we couldn't run things through telemetry, we were asked to, for the treatment system to be run in manual mode. So, if they came to turn the man, well on manually, could we do it? The problem was the way the system was designed, it was designed to run on telemetry, not manual mode. So, then we went back in and we tried to do some programming changes to make it run automatically. But we once again started running into problems where the flow wasn't adjusting correctly. And we were starting to make issues with, uh, the water flux into the village system. So, we winterized the system in November of two thousand fourteen with the idea of develop programming changes this following year. Kind of, since that point though, we realized that there's been downward significant, uh, decrease in concentrations. Not only in the village well, but all the surrounding wells of the plume. And this is kind of where we were looking at the idea of, is the plume or at the tail end and is it moving past? So, um, there's been, while there was the idea in place, we never went back and we finished reprogramming the treatment system. The treatment system right now will run if the village needs it to, however, it will not run automatically. Somebody would need to be there to manually adjust and adjust flows at this point to get it to work correctly. So, since there hasn't been a need, we didn't do this, and this is kind of where we're getting to this point now of, what's the future plan of the well, the treatment system, and everything kind of going forward since there hasn't been a need. So, this is where we're coming up to. So, the current status of the plume is, um, there's a groundwater, there's a downward vertical gradient. So, everything that was in the surface dropped to this lower aquifer. The, the, there was not a source identified on the property and it's likely no longer present since concentrations have significantly decreased. And it looks like it's moving down gradient. Uh, the highest levels switching from MW seventeen well on the site to MW fifteen, uh, towards the center of the valley. And then this is the table that I was referring to of the concentration. So, what at one point had had one seventy in the well onsite is what dropped to two point four. It looks like it's settling in somewhere in the low teens. The MW fifteen, which then became the highest level well, dropped and it looks like it's sitting in the twenty to thirty range. Once again, a significant decrease. And then the village well, where we had one point nine detected on July, the last two rounds of a non-detect. I'm hoping with the round we collected today continues to be non-detect. And as you can see, test well one, which is about fifty seventy-five feet away, which was gone from eleven to five to two point eight. I'm hoping that's gonna continue to decrease in ten, trend too.
It is only like fifty feet away, so I mean, it's really close, so it's odd that you don't pick anything up in the village well.
Did you do, uh, um, what did you call it, the P W?
The passive detention wells.
Did you do that on the test well one?
Yes, that's what we use in test well one.
But for the village well, you were taking an actual sample?
Where we're actually running the pump.
Right.
Just because of the way the well situated with the pump, it would be very difficult to get something down into the stream zone of where the pump is, so. That's the only well that sampled different from any of these wells that we.
And when you run it, how long do you run it for?
Typically about five minutes. We're running it at somewhere around sixty gallons a minute, so we're running about three hundred gallons through it. Is what we're running through. I'm not trying to run it for a long period of time to pull anything towards the well. I'm just trying to grab water that was in the immediate area around the well before we turned on the pump to what I'm getting up to.
Why wouldn't we continue to let it run so we can see if it is indeed drawing the contaminants up or not?
That would be something that we would potentially do as a next phase. It depends if that's what, the concern would be is, do you really wanna draw contamination to the village well? Or do you wanna kind of leave it alone and not try to draw something towards it? So, I mean, I could do a pump test, I could run it for twenty-four hours, I could see if concentrations change. But if I start drawing something, do I draw something that sets it back great? So, this is kind of where we're at this phase of monitoring and trying to decide what's the next step forward. I guess, I, I think that's what we're at.
Absolutely accurate, and so, to, to propose to do additional investigations, to, to, to do an experiment like you just, you know, proposed. Uh, to go and fix the, the programming of the treatment trailer so that it would run automatically by the push of a button, it's more money. We don't know at this point, is Eric Lewis here tonight?
Yeah.
He's right there.
Oh, here. We, we don't really necessarily know, number one, are, are, do you need this well other than a fire emergency? Uh, are you gonna need it for your distribution and, um, and if the concentration?
It's a loaded question.
It really is, go anyway.
I got comments, I only get to run, so go ahead.
So, if, if the trends continue, um, will DOH allow you to continue, just to go back to using this? Do we have enough evidence gathered at this point to, to put it back online as necessary?
Or whatever is still we need to gather.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we would, we would promote not pumping the well, right? Cause we believe the same thing, that that would draw contaminants back towards it. So, we've had other contaminated wells where we just, you know, don't pump it for a number of years. You let whatever treatment, or you know, um, if there was a, uh, pump and treat system set up to reduce the levels of contamination in the aquifer. But here, it all seems to be moving, which, uh, you know, we, we feel is accurate. And, um, so as long, and you're probably aware that the village applied for state grant loan funding. Cause they're still trying to make improvements to other springs and replace their old transmission line. And so, they're continuing to invest in, you know, these other sources of water. And so, as long as you don't need the black mar well, just leave it off. And, um, but if you, if there was an emergency and you absolutely had to turn it on and use it, we would authorize doing that. But we would wanna have you periodically test the water to make sure that all of a sudden, you know, we're going from non-detects back to all of a sudden we're at five. And next thing, we're back to, you know, ten or fifteen, you know, so.
And the reason regards to that, and I guess it is a loaded question, but at the last meeting, we had in regards to discussing the water and, uh, the grant itself and the project itself. It, it was stated that, you know, that we oughta just use the black mar well and, and not go forward with the water project. And just reinvest in the black mar well. But my concern though is, is, is bringing these contaminants back and with the plume. And then what do we do if it does change it and now it's just constantly pulling the contaminants? We're right back to where we were.
Ten years ago.
Yeah, e- exactly.
Is our, is our end game waiting to see non-detect in all the other wells?
That would be helpful, like at fifteen, which now looks at the highest level. If you saw that go backwards non-detect, then I would say there's a very, I would say it's a low chance that there's enough of a plume remaining. And if you started operating the well, then it would pull significant levels up there. But you wouldn't know until you started operating it, the same way DOH would then want a set of samples.
Right, but what I'm saying is, if, are we waiting till we get, for the health department and everybody to say, okay, go ahead. You don't have any detection on anything, let's try this and put it back online and monitor it running. More apt than to try and do it before.
Yeah, just, uh, you wait and see, you know, and when you see all the concentrations in the other monitoring wells disappear going non-detect. Then you're pretty sure that the plume has migrated past where you're gonna draw it anymore.
Can I just make one statement here, this entire time you've called this a backup well?
Okay.
The entire time I've worked here, this was always considered a primary and main water source. Cause it was the most stable and closest to the village. So, nowhere is this ever intended for a backup well.
Okay, that was.
So, this was our primary source, or, or we used our springs because they were cheaper. But this is always was the closest to the village, most of our, all the rest of our, our system's a hundred and ten years old past this well. So, not having this is a huge game of, of, of brush and rule that, you know what I'm saying?
Even, even in emails, I refer to it as backup well. Cause I mean, that's basically what it is at this point, but you're right, back when you were using that.
I mean, this is our primary ideal water source for the village. Is the one that we can guarantee will supply enough water to us year-round regardless of anything else that happens.
Not depending on the very old transmission.
Right.
Let, let's acknowledge that and say, alright, that, that's the fact, we wanna run this well. The treatment plant is there, ad- admittedly, there's some bugs we gotta work out of it. But the treatment plant is there, it's been commissioned by DOH, it's available for use. If you said tomorrow we wanna run it, we would work out the bugs and you would run it. Now, going, the, the expense of, of the electric to run the pump would be on you. Maintenance of the treatment trailer would be on us, we own that treatment trailer, that's not for the village, or, it, it is absolutely for the village. It's not owned by the village. And that's administratively, we had to do that, um, in, in the way that this, this project does not fit in D C, D E C. Any realm of D E C's typical operating procedures. This, this was a project that was way outside the norm for us, so, um.
Shocked.
Yeah, so.
Nobody's gone before, huh?
Uh, well, we, I'm sure we've gone here before, but, uh, administratively, it doesn't fit in the box. And, and part of that is that we provided that treatment trailer, but it's temporary. That's not a permanent solution, cause so much of the problem goes away. We've got about, we've got over one point two million dollars invested in this project.
Yeah, and that, that's more than anybody ever originally imagined, either you or us or anybody. And so, yeah, we don't wanna see anybody waste any more estate taxpayer dollars or anything.
I mean, we've, we've, uh, we've invested in this project heavily, we've got ten thousand dollars in dear generating. We've got ten thousand dollars into your generator. You know, we're committed to doing that. I mean, that's, that's what we were tasked with doing, and we're happy to do it.
You don't think pushing it would be a.
Well, that, so going to what Jason was saying, if you said, all right, we wanna run this well, it, it would be twofold. You, you would certainly alter the plume, you'd start, you'd probably after some period of time start to draw contaminant back to the well. You'd be treating it, you'd be using that water in your distribution system, and it would be okay as long as it met requirements. And it may or may not accelerate the movement of plume through this zone, through the capture zone of that well, and I, you know, I can't say for the, we don't have enough information.
I think honestly, it's nice, it'd be, it, to let it go by, I mean, it's moved this far pretty much in a year and a half without being run. But I mean, I guess if you go back to the slide where it shows the contaminants, where you first drilled to see, drilled, how far were we pulling the plume to us, you know what I mean? I don't know if I asked that in a question that made sense.
Yeah. Well, I mean, south of the well, this is where I've seen contamination, I know coming down to sixteen, we've never seen it.
I mean, like the first results.
What about east of fifteen? Going out into the middle of that?
Haven't sampled, but we've never seen anything in thirteen, we never saw anything when we sampled the test well, two and three to the side of this. So.
I mean, right at the very beginning, when you had a hundred and seventy at the one spot.
The one seventy hit, yeah.
Yeah. And then you had, what'd you have at fifteen?
At that point, I think this was in the sixty or eighty range.
All right, and then we were pulling like, I think the highest we ever had was a seventeen?
Seventeen hit is the highest we've ever had there.
So I mean, we were pulling quite a distance.
Right.
To get to that point.
Right. And if you take a look at where we come with these results, as you see, the one ten is down significantly. That's what I'm saying, I think we're at the tail end of the plume. How much at the tail end and how long does it take to continue going through, we don't know at this point.
You say you're down, you went down to twenty and then came back to thirty-five.
You may see this, and this is where we're trying to look at it seasonally, and this is kind of where at the monitoring period. So this would have been fall of last year, spring, higher water time this year, we're back to fall. I'm curious to see what this next set of results is, does it drop back down to the twenty level? And you're gonna start seeing seasonal fluctuations then of how much water is added to the system. In the spring, you're gonna have more from all the snow melt and the rain. It pushes water a little bit differently, and you have a little bit different groundwater flow than you do in the fall when it's dry.
So then are we gonna have more next spring than, so if the fall continues to go down, but the spring and summer it's, it's up higher?
It could be.
Really? I would just like to point out too that, micrograms per liter is parts per billion. We're talking at that level, that low, low level of parts per billion. So the, the, from one ten to twenty, that's a significant drop. But twenty and thirty-five, those are pretty much the same number, when you, when you start to look at this kind of data. They're able to detect that kind of difference, fifteen PPV difference. But that kind of subtle fluctuation in data over, over time, not significant, really.
Let me just ask a couple stupid questions here. You know, I, one, you got an aquifer down on a water lake, we don't know how big that lake is, do we?
No, the thickness of where we're talking, like for the Black Mar well and the area we're talking is about twenty feet thick.
Okay, so it's about twenty feet thick. We don't know how wide it is, and such, or how many gallons are in it. And, but, you know, for the pollution that we've had, would one fifty-five gallon drum have done this?
To be honest, that's tough to say, probably not one, but how many, I can't tell you.
And the rumor is, is that Tyco was caught burying four barrels over in Perrishburg.
That's not rumor, that's fact.
Well, I'm just reporting that to this fact, that it's fact, okay, what I'm just saying. So, they decided not to do that again, supposedly is the story. And when they did some construction over there, that they, the story is, is that they put the remaining barrels so that they wouldn't get caught, were buried. So, did we bury two barrels, and this is two barrels worth of rotting out? Or is the next two barrels, or the next four barrels, or the next eight barrels ready to rot out next? And we'll have a continual problem that will come and go. And, you know, that's one of the what ifs. And, because you're, you're doing this based on what's happened to this point. But we don't know where that, what it was originally. What, you know, was that one fifty-five gallon drum or ten fifty-five gallon drums that all rotted out at the same time? Or are they really sort of slowly rotting out, now we're waiting for the next one to rot out and discharge?
Yeah, and Rick, we.
And I'm just saying, but that.
Nobody knows at this point whether there were any barrels buried there or not, or maybe it was a result of material that was just sloppily handled and went down a floor drain and wound up through the subject system into the groundwater table, who knows?
When we did the investigation initially, the G E S.
Oh, I can go back if you want me to, I know which one you want.
This.
Oh, I just got the.
I'm not gonna answer your question specifically, but.
It's a hard question to answer.
Well, just to help, to try to kind of alleviate, or, I don't know how to determine exactly. This, this building is the most likely culprit for the scenario you just described, where they put some fill in the ground and built that building. We have wells up gradient, side gradient to it. There's one in that building and immediately outside of that building. As far as I know, they're all non-detect, right?
Yep, I never found them there.
This is the other most likely spot along that they filled. And we did all our test pitting down along here. And all we found was scrap steel and miscellaneous debris.
But where was the well that you got most contamination of?
This one. And this is why I kind of, you see two more wells that are sort of the up gradient, closer to where you would have expected either towards the road or towards an area that something would have been dumped in. And that was non-detect, and that was trace amounts when we were drilling the well, and I've never detected anything in the well since it's been installed.
So, the well that you had there with most contamination might be sitting on ground zero.
Could have been, I don't know, but it's tough to say what it's done the last.
The road to nowhere, yeah.
I mean, mission.
The road they built halfway through the woods, then, I don't know, that was a waste of time, let's quit. You can see the path going right there.
Yeah, that's where you dug your holes, right?
Some of them, yeah.
On the grassy portion that you can see in that photo is where we did test pitting. We, that, I mean, that's very, that's very overgrown. To put those wells in, they had to cut trees and clear brush, and they had a skid steer in there and everything else to, to make room to put those wells in.
See, you know, I appreciate, you know, you spent one point some million dollars. And we're sitting here trying to figure out what we're going to do. And right now, forty percent of our budget is debt, okay? If we go forward with the program that we said go forward with, just to see if we qualify for the grant, but if we go forward, we're gonna almost double our debt. We can't afford it. We're screwed. So now we gotta figure out, what are we going to do? And I would say, you know, is there a case here that we can go after where the pollution came from, and is that too nebulous, or is, you know?
At this point, based on the data we have, the DEC is not going to list that as a site. The DEC is not going to make that a registry site.
They found out that.
We did not find enough significant contamination to list that. You know, and then, that's probably one of the biggest employers in this town. I don't wanna, I don't wanna overstep, but say the DEC lists that site, we go after them for costs, do they close up shop and go somewhere else?
Well, that company is Toddco, and they're no longer around, that's.
Yeah, but the current owner is a responsible party also.
No, I'm just saying that, I understand what is coming back to the village, that we've had a burden that is almost impossible for us now, you know?
Well, I understand what you're saying. I, I, all I, I guess all I can offer is the fact that the treatment system is there, it's at your disposal.
For how long would we have use of it?
You, we could have discussed, I think, I'm not the one you need to talk to about that. But, I think that if you, I think if you propositioned us and said, we'd like to take over that treatment plant, we'd like to take possession of it, we would give it to you.
So I gotta ask this question then in regards to all this, because we've had a lot of discussion about the water project. I mean, we have the engineers, we have the DEC, we have the county health department. Which is the most appropriate road in your professional opinion to say to go? Do we go forward with this grant, with all the grant money if we get it? I mean, plus with the CBPG, that six hundred thousand dollars that we have. We'd be looking at about eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars we'd have to take out into a bond, which would increase water rates, but could, up to sixty-five dollars. But then we have water meters, and then we'll actually know what we're actually truly supposed to pay, or what people should pay for meters, so that amount could go down. And it might not even increase maybe minimally, who knows, these are variables we don't know. But also to take advantage of rates and everything for the project that we're looking at, and maybe see how we could cut costs with self-performing some of the work if that, if able to. Or, which some people that are against the project itself, are saying to use the Black Mar well, but then we have the contaminants. I don't know what is the right way to go, I feel that.